All right, I'd like to open up the village council work session in August 26th. Meeting 2021, I show the time is nine o'clock. So we have a full form with Mr. Merkelise, Councilman Merkelise. On the horn there on Zoom, I guess, what are we calling it?
Web X.
Web X.
Only for a year and a half, that's okay.
All right, so before we go any further, I'd like to either motion to allow council members to participate in one of them.
Hey, Austin.
We're in the meeting, what?
Motion passes. Hi Christina.
Hey Austin, I was just gonna say, I can just hear Austin like shuffling papers and draping. Can you move your phone towards the middle?
Put her there.
There we go.
Stick her up there so she can hear now. Can you hear better now?
Yeah, thank you.
They are rude Christina, rude they are.
You're not here, we're gonna assign you a project.
Oh, that's right.
That's how we roll. All right, next up, I need adoption of the agenda. Do we have anything to add or remove?
I got no changes.
No changes. That being said, I need a motion to clear the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up, no presentations, Village Hall. Do we have anything on that?
Christina.
Christina?
Yeah, I actually thought that was at the back of the agenda. If y'all don't mind, I'll let you do that on my manager's report.
Okay.
That's fine, I do have one thing to add, just drove by this morning. Travel is just about all down and they're planning on pouring the floor tomorrow, so it looks like we're still on schedule for that.
We will have a home for you soon.
But we're gonna keep these blinds.
Yes, they're gonna move to the Village Hall.
Thanks. Budget areas. Rick's gonna repurpose.
We're gonna go to Hotville. All right, we're a little giddy this morning, all right. First up, I will move, I guess we're gonna table Village Hall until Christina gets here. Next up, items of discussion, the discussion of 2022 Marvin Day celebration. Derek, what you got?
We all asked for, I believe, a detailed update, so if you'll look at the packet I'm passing out, the first page is the schedule that I've just started kind of sketching out and you'll see that it's pretty blank because we've yet to kind of hash out where everything's gonna fall. I'm really hoping to iron that out in our next Marvin Day work session, once a lot of stuff is finalized and hopefully in place. So really, page two is gonna be the big page, that has everybody's name on it, staff, PRG, council, maybe even some other names with things that they're somewhat assigned, working on, have commented on, but I think this is mostly what you all are asking for. I'll just run through some of the highlights real quick, so we had discussed a 5K, but that kind of got tabled to possibly next year and maybe going with something a little more passive, family friendly, more inclusive, so we're looking at like a walkathon, just exposing people to, you know, walk the trails, the greenway, kind of still having the same starting concept, using the elementary school, which we've already gotten permission to use, which is good, and then, you know, we can do what we want to there, we can do the health fair, we can have a blood drive, or we can still pursue those things. I've got a number of vendors that said that they would love to participate. When I talk to vendors, I'm talking about like people that are right here in our sphere of influence who serve the Marvin community with their businesses. So, you know, I'm good to go on that as far as kind of leading that charge with the opening Saturday morning event there at the elementary school. The alpaca farm was handed to me as well because I had the relationship with the owner. That farm might be moving, so I'll just let you know that and keep that on the, I'll keep that in mind as I'm planning that. And then I'm gonna get with some people with the county to see how they structure their disc golf tournaments and possibly put one on, but it may be sort of, again, it may be more passive and just say, just come play the disc golf course and, you know, we'll just have some fun prizes or something or just get people out there. Christina's working on t-shirts and bringing ideas for logos and organizing nature walks. Bob's working on garden tours and art tours and...
By the way, he's having a really good response getting people signed up for that.
For what?
The garden and art tours.
And so on, so questions, comments, thoughts, concerns?
Yeah, I don't see the, I don't see the junkathon for the mayor pro temp.
Always gonna be.
I'd pay for that.
The mayor.
Shoot.
Mayor.
I'll be running it.
Mayor, I will resign. I will resign.
Two for one, come on off.
Obviously, I think the most work and the biggest question marks are gonna be around the closing event, you know, where can we have it, how big can we make it, what are we gonna put into it, you know, which band is gonna play, et cetera, et cetera.
Derek, do we have a budget, what's our budget for this?
Five thousand?
Christina, can you put some money in for this?
She did, I think five thousand.
We did, we put five thousand in.
And then we're also looking for sponsors.
Yeah.
So hopefully a title sponsor, a couple title sponsors will pay for the bands and pay for some of the service too.
Hey Derek, I know I missed the last Park Circle Greenway meeting. Did John get any high school update?
No, I think it's like there's a new person in there, so he had made contact, but there wasn't really any dialogue, so I was trying to let the...
School year kind of get started.
Good school year. So, down.
I know.
We've got one PRG meeting, I think it's about a week and a half away.
And then one...
To iron some of this stuff out and get in the work day session.
At the end of September.
And I guess y'all have a meeting in between that too, which we could touch base on if we need to, but so really about a month and a half to kind of hammer out some stuff and we had said that September 26th, 28th.
We needed to have like...
Yeah, we need to have a lot of stuff set in stone.
Especially where we're gonna have the ending, because if we can't have it at the high school, then we need to start looking at alternate notes.
If possible.
Can I, when I sent that email, I didn't have my notes, when I sent that email to you, I didn't have my notes, they'd really liked the barn from 10:30 to 11:00, so if we can just change that.
What did I put on there?
10 to 11, because that's what I said, I just didn't have my notes.
Well, I wanted to give...
But yeah, probably, I would probably say like 10 to 11:30, just for like setup time and stuff. What?
I'm just gonna say, this is gonna come up on...
Yeah, real quick, yeah, but, but I did talk to the Raptor Center, I had a conference call with them, they are super excited, they're gonna have a 45-minute program, there's gonna be a max number of people, so it's basically gonna be like first come, first served, so we'll have to like kind of have people at the door turning people away, you know, but we can advertise for that, like it's first come, first served, 50 people, that's it. They're also gonna have a booth set up with like some games and stuff, so Derek, that was the other thing, are we gonna have like a spot for like people, participators to set up like at the, at the park somewhere to like set up a booth where people can get information, like kind of like an all-day thing, so if they miss the presentation, they can, so, because they said they can set up, if they have a big enough area, they can set up like different like animal type games and they have like displays.
Listen, I'm just the facilities manager, like I'll do whatever you guys tell me to.
So you can manage that?
This is your event, you drive the train, we'll jump on board.
Okay.
You know, PRGs jumping on board to support you and do whatever you need them to do.
All right, so we'll need like a decent space for them to set up.
The Raptor Center?
Yeah, like outside for like games, like in addition to having the barn. They wanna kind of be there like all day, and then what they're hoping for is in the afternoon that they will have a, they'll have a bird that they can release, and they were talking about like naming it Marvin and releasing it, obviously like, you know, they don't know...
They'll do a beetle chase.
Beetle chase, yeah.
Yeah, when they always let them go there.
Yeah, so, yeah, so they said, you know, obviously it just depends on if they've got a bird that is rehabilitated and ready to be released, but they will know that as we get closer to the date, that they would, that they would plan on doing that as well, and that would be like in the late afternoon.
So I'm gonna say, so I don't, so this doesn't eat into the whole work session, keep feeding me those, those updates and those ideas, and then when we come to the next Marvin Day work planning session, like I wanna erase this and, and then we just start placing things, you know, and then we have the barn and we lay out a schedule and we have the school and we lay out a schedule and we have a closing party location and we lay out the schedule and...
So, I wasn't at the last meeting, sorry, did they just totally nix the whole walk-run situation, or are they, are we still gonna have something?
No, we're gonna walk.
We're gonna walk.
That's the idea.
Perfect, okay, cool, all right, that's good.
Include the trails on there.
Yeah.
The only thing I, I mean, I know Jamie, to your point, that's gonna come up quick, it would be nice, Austin, and if you guys agree, that maybe send out a save the date announcement, start doing that almost monthly and then also appeal to the HOAs to do that same thing, because this comes up and people, you know, like, oh, I'm, I'm gonna be away that weekend, but they can make this, you know, something that they're, they're looking forward to, so we're not just scrambling to see, we don't know, but saving the date from an HOA standpoint, I think if they've got a good communications thing is probably good.
Well, they're having a meeting tonight, they're getting the HOA Presidents Council back together and they're having their first meeting tonight, so you guys can mention it.
And then the other thing is, again, appeal for donations for, from the HOAs, do they do it for National Night Out, I mean, we could probably ask them, and it doesn't hurt, I mean, all they can do is bring those.
We do have communications planned, we've just been waiting to make sure, okay, definitely doing that, May 21st, not moving the date, we've got the school booked, we just wanna make sure we have that date firm before we send out anything.
Yeah, they wanna make sure that they've got a place for the end party before they send out.
So that next meeting is the 28th, right?
Yeah.
Is that right, Austin?
That's, that's the one that we want you at.
September 28th, yeah, that's the one.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, maybe, maybe, that's okay, I was just gonna say, maybe we just ping everyone that's not here to say, you know, whatever's, whatever's under your list, you need to come up with a pretty locked up.
Well, we're gonna, we're, Park Circle Greenway's gonna have a meeting this 7th, so we'll tell everybody to have everything locked down by the 28th.
Okay, and I'm in touch with Fort Bragg and the Golden Knights.
Awesome.
Open to, I can pull that off.
That'd be really cool.
Yeah, that would.
What's that, flyover?
No, parachute.
Parachute.
Jump in.
James, you can jump in with them.
Andy's doing it.
I'd love to.
No, I'm sorry, I don't jump. That's James' geek.
But, yeah, we just need to have it locked up and then group one will save the date, this is gonna sneak up fast, and then the, the whole sponsorship thing, I mean, once we can lock that, then we can start going out there and hitting people up for this, because the title sponsors, I think we said two title sponsors.
Yeah, Derek, that's the other thing is, like, kind of how the whole sponsorship thing is gonna work, like, we really do need to get that nailed down, so when we're talking to these people, we can just start asking, do you wanna be a sponsor in addition to participating? I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure how to structure it, I've never done one, I know Christina Culp said that she's, you know, she's done some, but, I mean, I was kind of thinking we would do it kind of similar to what we have for the disc golf, but, yeah.
Do y'all wanna submit some ideas, or do y'all wanna just bring them, hash it out to the 28th?
Christina had a pretty good blueprint of some events that she had worked on in the past, and I think, you know, off the top of my head, I think we said two title sponsors, 5,000 each, and then like a gold level sponsor, silver level, bronze level, and you can rename them whatever, it don't have to be that, but, to have those sponsorships, because we should be hitting these folks pretty early on.
That's my bad.
I had an idea of a couple, like Scott, I think Scott would be like, I'm in, or...
Well, Tom, he said he would do whatever, he just doesn't know what he does, but he's in, so.
Yeah, so I mean, if you have, you know, if we could knock 10 grand out and know it along with our five, then we're, we're moving down the road pretty much.
Just wanna remember we have fireworks, $15,000, isn't that what Firestone pays, something like that, 15?
Or five, five and more.
I mean, listen, listen, if you fill up your sponsorships, that's not, I guess that's not off the table, to do just a small thing in fireworks as people are leaving.
Nah, this, I'm kidding, fireworks are just, but, no, no, couldn't make it.
Fireworks would be awesome.
You know what, we could, we'd be kind of fun to have some sort of friendly as far as events, and this could be for the following year, like some sort of fun competition between either neighborhoods or east versus west and a softball game or something like that that they could, you know, if you found it a venue or something like that, that would be...
Could go a lot of his lane, they need to...
Not out of my lane, I, I like a little friendly conversation.
It's Marvin Day.
It's Marvin Day, so I...
I don't, I, Joe, I don't hate that, because we were actually talking about doing a cornhole tournament, but for the, but for the first year, we need to just keep it like, you know, what we can handle and make sure that we are killing every single...
Yeah, that's an idea, ideas are free.
Ideas are free, yeah.
And honestly, you know, when, when what we've got on this...
We'll get the vote anyways.
I know.
I think we really have got the foundation for a lot of stuff for people to do, and there are people gonna be going, oh my God, what do I do, I don't prioritize, all right, kids, what do you wanna do? Town hall, I mean, there are gonna be people that definitely wanna go see town hall.
Yep.
And so, I mean, that's, that takes a lot of time and that should be something that's open all day and...
Yep, that's on Austin's list.
I am on point for photos that day, I'll be, I'll be going around.
No, no, no.
Time hall.
And I know we're...
I haven't signed, I haven't signed up for anything.
Doesn't matter, you can get, you can get volunteer for it.
I hadn't leave room.
I know we were talking about having a mascot.
We're still working on it.
If we get that solid five, is that something, we have someone walking around in the mascot suit.
You need to be in the next meeting.
What is our mascot?
You're the back end of the horse, Joe. Just so you know.
Mascot, ideas changed.
What they changed it to?
He shrunk, well, he went from a horse to an owl.
I know, but then they didn't like the owl.
Who didn't like the owl?
These, these jokers here.
Bob liked the owl.
Who didn't like the owl?
These jokers here.
We said owl on a horse's back, didn't we?
Claudia thought the owl was great, it showed wisdom, showed heritage, I liked the owl.
Me too, me too, Bob, these jokers are...
There's two votes right there.
It's got horses on it, it's no horses.
I'll beat some buzzard.
So wait, what, but didn't we take it back to them and say we want a cute care, like, like cartoon horse, isn't that what we took back to Christina Culp?
I don't remember.
Yes.
Well, we gotta, we've gotta remember that.
We told her to get additional logos with a cartoony looking horse.
Thank you, thank you.
We gotta remember, and think about this, 20 years from now, what we decide on isn't gonna still be here, so whatever that mascot looks and names and all that, it's gonna be...
Horse name.
For 20 years, we're gonna have golf tournaments and softball games.
Keep in mind, keep in mind our national, keep in mind our national bird, you know what bird was actually considered for the...
The buzzard.
No, and not instead of the eagle?
Turkey.
Turkey.
Oh, yeah, I did that. But then, but then, but then...
That's a what?
You can shoot your national bird, that's not the place to park. You can eat your national bird.
Okay, so are we good? James, James, you're with us.
Who's running this meeting, is it?
Me, always.
This has been fun, bird fact.
That's all good.
Thank you, Derek, sorry.
I got two quick questions, a question and then a comment. On the car event, there, again, you wanna make it as kind of attractive as possible, not only having cars, but like-minded people that go out there, so I guess I'm asking, I can get vendors that would be out there, that would have kind of car-type items out there to kind of fill out the outsides of the event, do we want that? Do we wanna confuse it with having vendors out there?
What do you mean?
Well, there's like, when you, when you do a car show, there's sometimes a booth that's set up and they have cleaning supplies for your cars in there, they, sometimes they give freebies out.
Why not?
Sure, why not, that's part of the car show experience.
I don't wanna make it look like it's profitable, we're not getting anything from it, just having vendors there, the like-minded people that are far into it.
I don't see why not.
Yeah, because the car enthusiasts will use those vendors maybe to pick up something that they forgot or whatever, it's a, it's a good thing.
The other comment I had is, you were talking about fireworks display, I mean, pretty much Firethorn, for all the years, have had that nailed down, can we get the same people that do that for whatever, wherever we would do fireworks display, we're gonna have it?
Yeah.
Is it gonna have a special deal? I'm just bringing that up, I mean, Firethorn's been good.
It's gonna be in May, right? So nine o'clock, it's pretty leg out still.
But it's the same, it's the same as July.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
You gotta remember the concert, the concert's gonna go to, let's just say, 10:30-ish, and then as people are leaving, they do set off fireworks, I mean, that's a, but I think we've gotta lock down budgets and pricing.
Where we're gonna have it, that's the business.
And Bob, just so you know, I'm gonna reach out to a gentleman who ran the car shows for the high schools, the name's Matt Cortelli, and he wanted to hand it over to me anyways, but he's got a lot of those contact information as well as people that have, now, I don't know if they're all Marvin residents, but I think that's what we wanna focus on first, depending on where the location is and stuff, but I'll reach out to him and get us all connected. And anyone else?
Nope.
All right, moving on, thank you, Derek. Number two, discussion and consideration of tree feeding preservation programs for Heritage Oaks at Marvin Eber Park.
So this is just a real quick discussion, I just wanna pull you guys on, so one of my tree vendors that I've talked to has basically offered like, hey, we can service these Heritage Oaks for you, they do, I think, three feedings a year, treating the roots, and the last quote that I got was like $500 per feeding, to really, I think, do it right, I would, it'd probably be a little more than that, which would have me to go out and get multiple bids. And this is something I don't have budgeted, so I wanted to see if it was something that you guys wanted me to pursue and be willing to, you know, possibly make a budget limit towards two per, you know...
Are the trees showing issues right now, or?
I mean, all those trees are, you know how big and old they are, you know, they get dead limbs, they drop limbs periodically.
Have they ever been fed before?
I don't know, and I've done one, I've done one since I've been here, but, I mean, it's, it's expensive, you know, it's, it's not something I've budgeted for in the past.
How many trees are we talking about, Derek?
You've got the double trunk that the tire swings used to be on, the two big ones that divide the bathroom area from the field, and then you've got, I think, two on the south side of the barn towards the shop that are extremely large, and there's other big oaks there, but those would be the, the five major ones.
The thing about it is, is that what we don't want at the park is what we had here at the church, and they're prone to that kind of thing happening, that type of tree, so considering feeding them is probably a good thing to prevent them from rotting out in the center and keeping them healthy.
So how much is it?
Well, I have to go out and really get detailed quotes.
How much did the guy, how much did the guy tell you?
The, the one vendor that I've used previously, he said, you know, $500 a feeding, we'd probably feed them three times a year.
Per tree?
No.
For everybody?
I think it's for all of them.
$1,500 a year to preserve trees that's...
As if 500, 370 years of probably 100.
Or $500 a...
$500 a service.
Service, yeah, okay. So 1,500 bucks a year to preserve trees that are 70, 80 years old?
Could be a little more, could be a little less, I mean, I'll probably have to shop.
I, I'd ask you to do this, if that's the case, let's shop it and see if we can get some quotes and then we come and maybe do a little more, so we can at least have some faith.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not...
I'm not opposed to it either, but that's just, before we just say, okay, yeah, this is needed, or is it even needed, because to your point, it may have never been done, but I understand your point about, you know...
For whatever reason, these trees, you know, Charlotte has had to take down a bunch of them because of that very same thing, and what is there, and I'm a landscaper and not an arborist, so what is missing that's making these trees do this? You know, is there something nutritionally missing that makes these trees rot out in the middle, or is it something genetic within the type of tree, or what is it? But if it's something that we could prevent by fertilizing, then I would say I would be really for it, but if it's not gonna do that, I think we need a little more information.
Figure out into it.
I'm looking, I'd just like to get some more information, maybe some professional advice from an arborist as to why and what, what the impacts would be if we do feed them? And what if we don't?
And then I would also, if they're gonna be doing that, I would also have, if that's what the business that they're in, look at, because a lot of trees sometimes get out of balance and you have to go in and trim certain parts of the tree to kind of make sure it grows the right way and stuff where they could, you know, so you might as well get a quote on that too, because I know I've had to do that with some trees I've had in the past where they get out of whack and stuff and they, or dead branches that are affected imbalance and stuff like that, so, I mean, just make sure we're covering all bases. All right, anything else?
We're sitting.
Thank you, next up, the discussion and consideration of options for possible swing replacement at Marvin Eber Park and authorized future budget amendment. Derek, you are one, two, three, dude.
I know, he wants all kinds of lessons from us.
That's rocket question.
Money.
Hey, beginning of the year. So obviously, you know that the playground is made of wood and it has shown some deterioration, we've taken some steps to mitigate that where we can, but the swings that are out there were built with four by four posts, so we're talking about not a lot of room for error when that would start deteriorating, and it's just getting, it's showing its age very quickly, and needs to be, needs to be replaced pretty soon. So what I did was, I had a rep just pull some, this is not a person who makes and builds swings, this is a person who works with a number of different vendors, and so I said, just give me some options for swings to give you all an idea of what it could potentially cost to replace them. Then I saw the numbers and I was like, holy cow, that's a lot to replace for swings.
These are steel structures, correct?
They are, these are steel, like these...
Which is, they'll be there forever.
Yeah, they're not gonna deteriorate. So my, my thoughts and consideration that I wanted to discuss with you is like, well, if we're gonna potentially, you know, replace the whole thing in five years and redo the drainage and make it, you know, something bigger and more brand, how much, if any, do we wanna spend on swings, you know, just to replace what's there and possibly have to take it back out, could still use it, right, but you might, you know, might have to take it out. The other option is, I reached out to the person who built the picnic shelter and he could just rebuild the frames out of, you know, six by six treated posts, probably for a heck of a lot cheaper than steel, and we just, we'd go that route on a short-term basis and...
Six by sixes will last 10 times longer than four by four, they won't twist and warp and do all that kind of crazy stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I shot him a picture and I said, hey, Yeah, I mean, I shot him a picture, and I said, hey, can you replace these? And he said, yes, very easily. So, but he hasn't, he hasn't given me a number yet.
That would be my thought until we redo the playground and then do something more permanent. One of the comments that my wife has made several times over the years is that we didn't have facilities for little, little kids, that two-to-five age group over there.
Toddler playground.
And, you know, adding some toddler swings to the swing set would be good, I think. But as far as the structure goes, I would say, you know, whatever we need to do, preserve it until we redo the whole playground, and then look at some more of a permanent thing, but that's just my two cents.
So I can add a comment that Derek, I was the one that broke that swing. I go there often with my grandson, and I love those swings, and he'll be on one swing, and Claudia walks by, and she says, Bob, look, the wood is split every time you're swinging on that thing. You could see that if you're looking.
There is a weight limit, Bob.
And I saw the wood split, I mean, I did, well, it's teasing, but she said, that's broken, so it's a pipe priority. That you can see when you swing on it, yeah, the wood just swings and gets cracked, and, but anyway, I will, I will be going into this.
What are we looking at budget-wise? Is it going to be numbers again?
Put it wide, put it wide range.
It's from $7,000 to $2,800, and then six-by-six, yeah, it sounds like it's going to be much cheaper than that.
Yeah.
Okay, probably, probably in the range of $1,500.
Best of the signs, yes.
Don't stay off of them.
Yeah.
Especially Bob.
Age and safety research.
Some council members.
Stop. This means you, Bob.
He's just ignoring us, he's just, get down, not even paying any attention to us.
It is not uncommon for me to ask a teenager to get out of the toddler bucket swing.
Yeah.
I mean, they'll like, literally, you know, sit in the bucket swing and.
Like with their feet through the holes?
No, no, no.
It's going to break, and someone's going to get hurt, and then we're going to have an issue.
I, I do like the idea of just doing a temporary fix for now as we're working towards replacing the entire playground situation, so let's, let's figure out how much that's going to cost, Derek, and just go that route.
All right.
Sounds great, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Derek. Next up, we have item number four, discussion and consider adoption of ordinance amending the general fund budget for the purchase of traffic radar signs as approved at the 8-10-2021 council regular meeting.
He's nervous. He's nervous. We said it all.
I just have a contingency appropriation for $6,000 to roads and transportation for traffic calming, for the purchase of the radar signs as approved at the 8-10-21, 2021 meeting.
If we say no.
Then you don't get your signs.
We've already approved it.
We don't live it, you don't get your signs.
So.
We need a motion?
Yeah, I was going to say, do you just want us to, you want our motion to approve the?
Yes.
Okay, please.
And we're, do we do that in work session meetings?
Yeah, because she needs it moved today.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can get it paid for. Hi, hey, thanks for coming to work today.
She doesn't start.
I'm just kidding. We know, you've been on the phone, it's fine.
We're good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
I'm, I'm listening, I'm going to make some comments, but I'm making sure y'all are okay with the budget amendment.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah. Any questions on the budget amendment? It's how much again?
$6,000.
$6,000. Did you not look at your package?
Coming from.
All the details. I did look at the minutes, and I did look at some other stuff, but I figured I don't vote anyway, so.
Coming from contingency and removing it in to traffic calming, it's the new category that we made.
Okay.
Because I figured later on, that might be some, yeah.
We'll definitely have more of that.
Yeah, okay. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the general fund budget for the purchase of traffic radar signs as approved at the 8-10-21 council regular meeting.
I just, before we vote, I just don't, I hate the idea of adding more visible pollution to the, you know, whether it's traffic signs and stuff like that, you know, I mean, it's more signs, there's requirements from DOT, I get that, but then we're adding to this, which is an issue to slow down, but.
I think I, there's a picture of it here, just so you.
Still, still visible, I, you know, every time I go by.
We're going to put it in your backyard, Joe, so that you can.
That's, yeah, that's fine. But again, it's adding to the rural, it's not the prettiest thing for a rural area, but in the end, it's, we're trying to slow traffic.
We're trying to save lives, Joe, we're trying to save lives.
I know, that's right.
I know, well, just, anyways, further discussion. All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, just number five, consider call for public hearing to be held on September 14th, 2021 at six, what's my, at six, am I missing something?
No, you're fine.
At 6:00 PM at Village Hall for special use permit application number 21-12695 at 608 Running Horse Lane, or the rear yard at Abbot's Step Side Yard as required by per 151.0549E3.
So moved.
Yeah, just briefly.
Just let her move it.
That's right, go ahead, real quick.
I was going to say, in your packet, I put a little bit of brief, uh, brief info about the special use permit for the pool, for the, uh, for the council meeting, I will have a presentation with visual, uh, with kind of pictures of this area and kind of giving you guys all of that, and, but it's kind of just a straightforward thing. It's a, it's a unique situation.
Pool, people are busy, aren't they? Okay, all right.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, consider call for public hearing to be held.
Sorry, Hunter.
Oh, you're good.
On September 14th, 2021, 6:00 PM, Village Hall to consider approval of the gates at Marvin Preliminary Platte and Construction Plans.
So moved.
We need to hear.
It's a call for public hearing.
I know, it's called for public hearing, but real quick, just for the record.
Just, it's for the rural subdivision, the gates at Marvin, it's at the corner of Stacy Howie and, uh, Marlin Hall. But, yeah, they, we'll have those construction plans and per what our ordinance states, have a call for a hearing.
All right, thank you.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, consider a public hearing to be held September 14th, 2021, 6:00 PM, Village Hall for zoning designation of newly annexed parcel 06210007A8802 Bonn's Grove Church Road.
Real quick, and I'll go ahead and kind of say it for both of them, we annexed both of these properties, this is the general one, and the next one, back in, at the August or July.
That was July, July regular.
Uh, per, per what the state statutes say, as well as our ordinance, we have to give them our zoning designation, so this is just going through that proper, uh, proper process to have them zone them for, uh, one of our zoning designations.
And in the future, we're going to, we're going to have this hearing the same time you got officially annexed.
It's going to be my question. But that was going to be my question, okay.
All right, need a motion for that?
Go ahead.
Motion?
Hang on, I'll wait past.
I'd like to make a motion to call for the public hearing to be held September 14th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, Village Hall for zoning designation of newly annexed parcel 06210007A8802 Bonn's Grove Church Road.
Further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, number eight, consider call for public hearing to be held September 14th, 2021, 6:00 PM, Village Hall for zoning designation newly annexed parcel 06207005C Marvin Eber Park.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, number nine, discussion and consider request from council candidate Brandy Smith to extend the candidate questionnaire deadline.
Okay, I included a brief memo in your package, just kind of explained the situation, but it's okay with you all, but Brandy, Brandy's big on her request, so she's here.
Does anyone have any opposed to that? For the, okay, Brandy, you have a floor.
Um, I basically went to deadline for the questionnaire, and just wanted to know if Austin could extend it for me to Marvin Eberton's. Is there policy?
It's in the, yeah, it's included in the packet.
Not a big deal if not, I have a Facebook page where I do. Basically, I kind of took the questions that y'all were asking and put it on there too, and have Marvin Eberton's that are adding to it, so they'll see it either way. It's probably a bigger platform that you guys have than what my Facebook page is.
Right. I leave that up to council, any specific reason why you missed the deadline?
So, there was so much information in the very beginning. I had met with Joe and Kim, and they kind of like gave me a lowdown about reporters reaching out to me, be careful what you say. Austin had called and left me a message, and I thought he was one of the local reporters that Joe and Kim was talking about, and so I never really even got back to him on it until after the deadline. Joe had called me, I think, the day of or the day after, and explained to me about the questionnaires.
I'll, I'll mention real quick too, she had actually asked us, I don't know, maybe it's a day or two after the deadline, she actually came in the office, but because it's against y'all's policy, I said that we had to add it to the agenda, so that's one of the reasons you're seeing it so late, is because I want to let y'all make that call, not us.
Yeah, I mean, I'm inclined to say no, sorry. We have a policy in place, you know, for, for this specific reason, we wouldn't let other candidates do it. Yeah, I know Joe and I, we met with you, I know we told you about the candidate questionnaire, I know we told you about it Tuesday night at Coffee with Council, and I know we mentioned it again Thursday at the work session that you attended, so, um, I, I'm just, you know, we've got a policy in place, we have a deadline, we have ample time for people to fill it out, so my inclination is no.
Any other comments or questions before we vote? Bob?
I mean, I, I, we have a policy in place, but I agree with counsel and Brandy first.
Okay.
I'm inclined to agree, given that you guys had this conversation, I'm going to have to agree with Kim and Bob.
I think if I had known upfront about the policy, I wouldn't even have asked. This wouldn't even be on the agenda, so thanks for clarifying.
That's okay.
Yeah, I agree with you, yeah. I didn't even know that about the policy, about the questionnaire.
Unfortunately, we have to make policies on everything we do.
Oh, right, I thought it was like a friendly, open communication thing that y'all do on your website. I didn't even know.
No, we did.
It can't be friendly in Marvin, unfortunately, because people will take advantage of it, and so, I mean, literally, I mean, we literally have to have a policy on everything because.
And in fairness, if we go against their own policy, then we get chastised for that from the community, and it's, it gives us an extra neighbor and stuff like that, so, and I think to Kim's point, we tried to make everyone aware of deadlines and stuff like that, as best we could.
I guess I just wasn't connecting the dots with what you guys were saying with the questionnaire, being a deadline, Austin's much, it's totally fine.
Okay, all right. Do we need to vote on that then?
No.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you though for asking. So next up, we have number 10, discussion of annexation local.
All right, so you, me and Hunter are going to work, speak on this together. So we took your feedback from the last meeting and added some additional information into this memo, explaining our reasoning behind why we would ask the state legislature to annex properties into Marvin. At the same time, we, we want to work on this in the background, have this on our back burner, and we want to pursue a concurrent voluntary annexation campaign. We have got some new contacts recently, and we think we've made some progress, so we're going to see if we can get some meetings scheduled and see if we can better gauge interest based on our trash service and services we have to offer.
What?
What?
What did you just say?
The trash service beginning next year, that's something that's gotten a lot of interest.
Who were you going to talk to?
Uh, we have a couple neighborhoods in mind.
Oh, okay.
One of them, one of them being Sedgfield, another being the gates at Ansley.
I missed the beginning part, sorry.
We, um.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add on that, between our last work session and this one, Austin and I both received various emails from maybe different, different subdivisions and requesting either, you know, potentially us taking over their roads, or if it's the, you know, the trash service and certain things, so, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of a way to begin that, that communication between certain property owners within that development, and see if we can get them on board to push for full voluntary annexation, so.
Before we make them do it?
Before we request, I mean, I think if we're trying to show the initiative that if we can get them to voluntary annex, I think it will, once again, to, to help our overall argument.
So you want to have any questions about the memo, what we've changed to it from last?
No, I saw it was really good, like, really good points, and I still really like the idea, if people don't want to voluntarily do it, and, and, because I do know that there are obviously donut holes that cause a lot of problems around here, and one thing that I want to bring up, and something in Open Topics, this is kind of like right on the, on the coattails of that, so I'll talk about that in Open Topics, but this is, it, it is a problem, and, and I think if, yeah.
So are you guys good with us trying to pursue some of these meetings with the HOAs in the background?
Absolutely.
Yes.
We perhaps want to do some more mailers in the future, I feel like a sample of that in here too.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, unfortunately, no one volunteers to pay a tax.
Well, we have one.
Well, I mean, communities like a whole neighborhood and stuff, there's always going to be people finding reasons not to if they don't have to.
Right. Let's show them what they should.
And that's kind of what our, that's our intent, is to, once we start establishing contacts, kind of catering, what does this maybe neighborhood have to gain the most from annexing it? And if it's, you know, this is what they're going to pay them potential, you know, on average, the property tax, but here's what the trash service is going to cost and other things, you know, it's kind of showing them what all they're going to get for their.
So when you approach the HOAs, your goal is to start at what level? The, where they just have the board meetings and go to those, or you're just going to be doing emails back and forth? Do you plan to be there in person to answer questions, or what do you, what do you foresee as far as the process of, of bringing in those donut holes?
If we can get them in a room, I'd love to get them in a room.
Yeah, we're kind of taking what, anything to get our foot in the door, and it's, it's first establishing a contact, because we didn't have contacts for certain neighborhoods, and then we've been able to get that through either one person or just doing some research, and just once again, kind of, one, I mean, it's because it's kind of with the HOA, President's meeting, and other, there's a lot of other moving parts, so we were trying to establish these contacts, but it's helped to get that, and then, yeah, to Austin's point, like, hey, we would like to just sit down and like chat with you and see what, you know, once again, what you guys have, I mean, your, one, your concerns to, and like, you know, explain to them what they have most to gain from it.
Yeah, there's a big difference from an individual wanting it versus a board and an HOA that gets it on the agenda, that, you know, but, I, yeah, okay.
I was going to ask, Bob, last, last meeting you asked us to add a his, a section on history, is this, is this kind of what you were thinking?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
All right. Any action on that?
No, just, just, just feedback here.
Go, ready.
All right. Next up, we have discussion and consider adoption of corrected council minutes from the 4/13/21 budget work session meeting.
So, uh, this, uh, this, these brief minutes from the budget work session in April, I made a mistake, I accidentally listed the, um, the revenue neutral tax rate as five and a half cents, I just misheard something in the conversation and inadvertently got through, so I just, I'm just requesting that we correct that record, um, pretty expediently.
I can't believe you made a mistake, Austin.
I know.
Can't believe we approved it with that mistake in there. That was our bad.
So are you changing five and a half cents to?
To, it's to four, to point zero four six, so.
Yeah.
Four and a half, four point six cents essentially.
All right, you need us to make motion to do that?
Yeah, just a motion to adopt these corrected minutes.
All right, so I'll make a motion to adopt the corrected council minutes from the 4/13/21 budget work session meeting.
Further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. Thank you. Next up we have, uh, number 12. Review of council minutes from 72921 work session and 81021 regular meeting.
I did not have any changes for either one.
I don't have anything either.
We'll start on July 29th. See, to either one. So Jamie and.
What?
Andy? No, do they have any? I'm gonna ask.
No, I'm good.
Do you have any?
I, I don't. I don't. Okay. So need to make a motion to move those.
You don't need a motion.
Okay. Move those to the consent agenda.
All right. Open topics, five minutes.
Okay, I have one. So apparently, you know, um, traffic around the middle school and high school of Marvin Ridge is, has been crazy. Even, I know the elementary schools have been really bad too. Um, so I had a phone call from a PTSO board member from the middle school yesterday and wanting to know what we could do to help facilitate sidewalks up and down Crane Road that those kids could walk instead of being riders and how we can get some connectivity to the school from, from Bonds Grove through like the power lines. And I told her, I said, listen, it's not Marvin. So these would be, this would be another great reason for some of these neighborhoods to be in Marvin because we could help facilitate sidewalks and more connectivity. I told her it's on the master plan, but it is way down the list because it's not in Marvin. Most of these neighborhoods aren't. So I just told her I'd bring it up at the meeting if anybody has any ideas. I told her that they should call the sheriff's department and have them get some people out there to direct traffic during these high volume times. Um, but I figured, you know, I was one person that, you know. So I was just hoping if anybody has any suggestions.
I still get the blurbs from the high school and the issue really, I think what we're learning, what I've learned just from being away and the first few days of school happening is number one is a shortage of bus drivers.
But there's been a shortage for five years, so.
But there's a, there's an exceptional shortage, which is, and you have COVID tacked onto that where the kids are uncomfortable getting on a bus. So they're getting, so you got more cars going to, uh, I think, I think part of it too is, I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it is the school's responsibility. It's not us. It's like, you know, maybe limit the number of cars because they allow a ton of kids to drive to school as well. And yes, they are going into another parking lot, but that's still part of the traffic that's going to the schools and they're parking there. So maybe an option is they do a, um, uh, you know, different days based on the license plate or something like that. Like they used to do back in, I'm, I'm dating myself now, in the seventies when we had this gas shortage. It was, what was the last number? Was it an even number, odd number? Those get to go to the park on these days and stuff. Anything that can relieve the traffic. It's really got, I, I think it's a fair point, Kim, but it's, it's really the school's responsibility.
No, I know. No, I know it's not our responsibility. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I would, I told her that I would bring it up and if anybody has any suggestions, because they were talking about adding in an additional turn lane into the school because they have two turn lanes coming off of Crane Road. If you could have two coming into Crane Road. I mean, I watched on the bus app on Monday, I watched the bus sit in front of PDS on Waxell Marvin Road for 10 minutes not moving because traffic was backed up that far. Um, so.
And our kids are having, my own personal kids are going from walking just up to the corner, having to walk all the way up to the, um, uh, pool area, which is almost a mile for them to walk. So it's like.
Both ways through 16th and so.
You know, I mean.
Uphill.
Right. But it's, 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 it's a good half a mile to be there at seven. It's just, and that's because of the shortage of.
But my question is, does anybody have any suggestions? Cause I didn't have any except call the sheriff's department and have them direct traffic because the one poor guy can't do it on Crane Road.
If there's any suggestions, one thing Jamie and I did discuss this with Mason the other night when that carpool council that they've already been contacted about this. People have been up in arms about it. Um, I can tell you that I have witnessed this because it's the backup. Passed my house every morning. This morning there wasn't nearly the backup. And I, I feel like that it's first week of school woes, getting things, but I've never ever, since I've lived here for 12 years, seen anything close to this. So I think part of what's going on, I mean, the, the big thing is 54 bus drivers short is what Mason told us the other day. 54 across the county. That's a lot of bus drivers.
Yeah.
Two, COVID and, you know, it's just, a lot of people are driving. Once some of these things work themselves out.
Yeah.
I see a lot of big change coming back around to being more convenient and people do have to accommodate, um, amongst themselves in the private sector for some of these exceptional issues that we have going on. I, I would love to see kids walk, but there again, we can't force our trails.
And that's what I told her. I was like, we, it's not our, you know, it's not our jurisdiction.
Here's what I think we can do though. Here's what I think we can do.
Getting better.
Is Austin, if you could, if it's okay with the council, if you could put out a blurb to encourage people to carpool to school. Meaning that find in the, have the neighborhoods, the HOAs put out something saying, look, we're having some issues with the school. And just have them carpool. I mean, it's gonna reduce.
Or get on the bus.
Or encourage them to use the bus or, see, that's gonna be difficult because now the bus stops are one in one neighborhood, which is really challenging. Not a big deal to get off the bus at the end of the day, but because they're walking in the afternoon, but the other day I heard it was pouring down rain. But my point is communication wise, what we can do for this person who is concerned is put out a blurb to encourage them to do, you know, let's do our part from a community standpoint.
We, we.
Because we can't control budgetary, we can't control it any other way other than communication.
We, we can, we can send it on through email to, on our social media and I can send it to the HOA president.
Yeah. Cause it's, it's a real pressing issue. And, you know, if we're all talking about everyone wants to, I know they're teaching being green and stuff. That's part of it. I mean.
Absolutely.
Is, is hopping in the car. I know we do it personally and it goes back and forth and it relieves the parents that are, it, it's easy to do. It's just a matter of getting the connections and, and figuring out who schedules with what and stuff.
So in that blurb, just tell people to also have a little bit of patience as school is starting and, because I read some lady on Nextdoor lost her ever loving mind because she couldn't turn into her neighborhood on Crane Road. Luckily that post has been removed because she was.
It's aggravating. I had to go.
I'm sure, but she's in there calling people, M Mbers and, I mean, I was like, wow.
I mean, it's, it is aggravating. It took me 30 minutes extra to get this out Charlotte because I couldn't make a left out of my driveway. I had to drive all the way through South Carolina to get back on Monday. Surprise to me. I had no idea the traffic was gonna be backed up like that. But we all have to deal with it.
Well, that, that being said, Andy and I will be commuting or carpooling to Wuma this afternoon.
There you go. Good job, boy.
Starlings.
Yeah.
Another, just another comment. It's just not in our neighborhood. I was going down to Arby McHale yesterday and, you know, I think, it, we retired. It did not hit me that there was, uh, uh, obviously school had started yesterday. You should have seen Elon Elementary. I mean, it absolutely was a snake of cars. I mean, I, nobody could get out of their parking spaces and these cars were all lined up. So it was amazing to, to see the crowds and everybody's then coming out onto Arby McHale. And I could see people just very frustrated trying to come out of the car skater, you know, that whole area there. So, you know.
But.
But you said, Andy, it's the first day or first week, you know?
Yeah. It's the first week. But Bob, in all fairness, being retired, you shouldn't be up before nine AM. So just. All right. Anything else on open topics?
Nope. Thank you.
All right. Communications, discussion of September 2021, communications.
Wow, what?
I had a feeling. What, what do you have?
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't write it down. I wanted to find it. Okay, so we have Rosha Shana on the seventh of September. It's a holiday. We're putting all holidays in there now.
Are we doing all religious holidays?
Yes, we have been.
Spell that for me.
R O S H.
Uh huh.
Space, H A S, H A N, A N, A H, H, sorry.
I ain't got it, but okay.
Okay. Then we got, that's on the seventh. Then we got Yon Kapur on the 16th.
Rest of us.
For the rest of us.
Wait, say that again. What am I adding?
Yon Kapur on the 16th. Just go through your calendar and put all the holidays that pop up on there.
They don't, religious holidays don't pop up on our calendars.
On your iPhone.
Yeah, they do on your iPhone.
I don't know. Must have turned that off.
Uh, no, Union County School on the 16th. There is an early release day on the 22nd.
I will ask the school for their calendar.
There you go. Um, you can just pull it up on their website. That'd be easier. Uh, early voting starts October 14th through the 30th. I will put that out like the middle of September so people can start.
Early voting October what?
14th through the 30th, but I would, and I'd have it all through October, but I would also start it in September so that people know. And it's only, um, there's only one Saturday to early vote and it's only in Monroe, at the library. Um, and then let's start advertising the fall town hall because I didn't see it on there.
Oh, yeah, I apologize.
That's okay. Oh, and then we, Christina put out, um, uh, like an FAQ email about like trust your sources, like who information is coming from. That needs to be going out regularly from now until November 3rd. I got, I got, I know where it's at.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Because people are gonna start looking on Nextdoor and other places for information. So they need to be, trust, no, make sure you trust your source.
And we're working on some other FAQs at the moment.
Perfect. Okay, that was it. That's all I had. Um, okay. You guys have anything?
How, how was just, you know, communication? How was the last, did we have any visitors?
Coffee with council, anybody come?
Coffee with council. Yeah. No, we had, oh, we did have one turn around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We thought.
Yeah.
It started to pull in.
We all jumped up and we're like.
We went out there to say, come on in and she just left. Well, for those that are listening, um, we are trying. We are here twice a month and, uh, we are making every so.
We're here technically four times a month if you really want to come in and talk to us.
Exactly. But from a back and forth standpoint, we're, we're trying to do all things, but this is telling me that during all this.
We're doing everything right.
We're trying to do.
Jamie brought up a good point and I think we should be, it has to begin with a C. Coffee with council in the morning session and then cocktails with council in the eating session. If, and then we'll have a whole bunch of it.
That's my fear. They say we have.
Great drunk people in town halls.
I pull my charger. I will just have a tap. And then we're responsible for getting everyone home, right?
Off carpool. Drive everybody home.
Oh, I did not.
I tell you, if you wear cocktails with council, there's no question. The problem is you'll have everyone from Waxell and the streets.
I've been checking IDs.
Well, that drunk driver's a little bit here.
Confirmation of address of the door.
Jamie and I were, we're not far off.
Bring you by the name.
I said cognac.
That was a mayor's name at one point.
It was. Um. Your next regular meeting, you guys are gonna be scheduling the remaining coffee with council dates for the year. Just letting you know.
Awesome.
Okay, the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And we've got town hall, the fall town hall coming up.
Yeah.
And it's October, that's Thursday, October 14th.
So, and you know what? It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to start putting, mark your calendar.
I just said that. Nobody must have been listening to me.
I've got, I've got, I, I have it on here, but I got stuff, I got stuff planned for it.
I did. I said, start advertising the fall town hall.
It's gonna be in that, uh, it's gonna be in that magazine.
Communications down pat. We just let you run with it.
At the barn.
Yes, at the barn. Okay, good.
I like it at the barn.
Food truck?
Oh, absolutely.
No food truck because then no one's gonna show up. We're gonna end up paying a $3,000 and.
No, they have a minimum 500.
Oh, is it 500?
I think so. But we gotta get it.
It wasn't that bad last time. No, I know, but we just have people pulling off the side of the road.
I gotta eat dinner for my kids. Can you get these back?
And he didn't just get one box.
No, we had two.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, he did come in. I'm gonna get his name and number.
He's like, oh, sweet.
Anything else on communications? Bob, you left the building or?
Now crack me up.
All right. Um, moving on. Next up we have reports and updates. Uh, managers report, Christina, American Rescue Plan update. We are gonna be, I think, discussing this.
That is on our agenda today.
Just to hear what, uh, other communities are gonna do, but go ahead.
So per the last council meeting, we did sign the contract with them. We received, actually I think we have it in our bank account right now. Our first deposit of $540,000. So it's just gonna sit there until we figure out what to spend it on. More than likely, we will probably do a special revenue ordinance. So you'll probably see some more activity come back on that. Just, just want to let you know that we do have our first allotment. We will get our next allotment next year.
Do we know, do we have an idea of what we're gonna start using it on?
I am waiting for the final rule to come out, um, just to make sure we don't overspend on something and have to potentially pay it back. But a couple of things that I'm, wanna pitch to you guys when we get some more clarity is, um, number one, you all had approved the plans for village hall back in February, I wanna say. And you, inside of those plans, we kind of had a small conference table like this. So I'm gonna put, try to put some of the, the DAS cost and some of that social distancing requirement cost into ARP because y'all changed the plans to increase social distancing. Um, so that DAS I think was around $15,000. I'll try to put that in there. Also try to put a lot of the technology in, um, because we are now required to, to do these webex. That's about $50,000, if not a little bit more. So we'll try to put a little bit of those costs in there. Also talking about, we'll, we'll pitch the idea if you guys want to talk about premium pay to employees that were, um, operating under the emergency declaration, uh, working. We'll also talk about infrastructure along this corridor. I've also pitched the idea of potentially paying for the water line replacement on Marvin Road that just took place.
Sewer line.
Um, sewer line to the county to get basically reimbursed in the form of a sidewalk. So hopefully that pans out. Those are just a couple of ideas. We're waiting on the final rule to come out.
So, so they're giving out money without telling people exactly what they could spend it on?
They said infrastructure, water, sewer and broadband. None of that we really can use. And that's primarily what a lot of people are using it for. A lot of them are using it for premium pay for their employees. We don't have a lot of employees. So even if we spent the max amount, it's just gonna be a drop in the bucket. Um, a lot of people are doing programs to encourage people to get the vaccinations. And if y'all are interested in that.
So this, I, I thought about that too. This is states are, they're getting very creative and it's like, look, there's no adult in the room here. Everybody, they think it's free money. It's not free money. It gets to be paid. Why don't we just take, how many households do we have in North, in Marvin?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Take 1.4 million divided by 2,000 and give each, everybody a check. There's your, there's your payments for the next two years for taxes and say, look, this is ridiculous. I mean, the money that's coming, it, it's just not free money. It's gonna affect us. So why not just give it right back to the people? We weren't expecting, it has nothing to do with COVID. Any of this stuff has nothing to do with COVID. And we've been able to operate on a one point, whatever it is, million dollar budget to begin. Yes, it's nice to have free money, but it's not free. Give it back to the residents.
There, there are, okay. And then another caveat to that is they were doing, um, grants to businesses that were impacted. Hospitality businesses, tourism, that sort of thing. However, we don't have any of that. If y'all are interested in some way giving it back to the community, I can look at programs and see what's out there. I know there were some people talking about, um, in essence, people that lost their jobs or that need rental assistance, that sort of thing. You could tap into those funds. I don't know if we have a lot of those types of people in this community, but it's definitely something I can look into. The county does have a program in Union County where if you are a landlord or a renter and you need rental assistance, they have a lot of money left over right now to help those people.
Like 89% of the funds that were put in that fund to help out the people who couldn't pay rent has not been distributed yet. And on the federal level. So there's money there for the people. They say, oh yeah, CDC says, oh yeah, you, you don't have to pay rent anymore. And the landlords are getting hurt, but those funds have not made it to the landlords. I, 89% of those funds have not made it to the landlords. The report was just the other day on that. So it's like, give it, we're gonna end up paying for it in the end, or our kids were. Give it back, figure out a way to give it back right back to the community. Cause I, yes, we could use it, but it's like. Cause I, yes, we could use it, but it's like, we, it's so unclear. If we sign up for this, what, what are we on the hook for in the end? I mean, because they can tie it, or they have tried to tie it, oh, you can't increase taxes. You take this money, uh, you can't, you can't reduce taxes.
It does say on here that the funds don't have to be obligated until December 31st, 2024. So we do have some time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm saying, there's some ties in there that, that, that they're trying to go for those very conservative areas that, that wanna cut taxes, they, they have a tie, they know, you accept this money, you can't cut taxes.
Do you, you can't, and you can't tie this in any way, shape or form to tax cuts or anything like that. You can use it for, uh, lost revenues. However, again, we don't have a lot of revenues. We will use that, that, um, section to get payment, paybacks for loss of barn rentals and that sort of thing. But again, it's, it's a drop in the bucket. So when we're talking about like major expenditures, really the only thing that I can think of is those town hall expenditures for social distancing and technology infrastructure that we would need to encourage social distancing in this situation that we're in.
But infrastructure, you can't do sidewalks and things like that?
And that's why I try to be creative in a sense that if we can pay for what just happened and then get the county to do the sidewalks, or either pay us back in some way, shape or form, we could still get the sidewalks, but in a roundabout way.
I think that's, I, I think that's kind of the general consensus with Wuma is trying to, to, you know, explore options to work with the county, being that the county does all of the water and sewer. None of the municipalities do it, so, I mean, I think Weddington had one small, um, water project that they were looking at. But by and large, that's what Wuma's stance is, is what can we, what can we do with the county to try to make this be better?
So you guys are having that conversation this afternoon?
We are.
Okay, so bring that back to us and see what, see what they say.
Is there a county representative there by chance?
Sometimes.
Yeah, it depends.
I think David Willis is gonna be there.
David Willis will be there today because of another subject that we're talking about. But a lot of times, um, Dennis and Richard are there.
Okay, I, I meant from a staff level, because the only, the only problem that I see in that transaction is water and sewer is an enterprise fund, so it has its own revenue source. And so you, you typically are earmarked to spending whatever it is on that sole revenue producing infrastructure. So I was curious, and I'd asked the assistant county manager if there was a way that they could do that legally, because I don't know how the enterprise funds works in terms of can they actually pay for a sidewalk that's not related to the infrastructure.
I guess the county also got the same type of a stimulus package.
Oh yeah.
So, so that's, of course, and then they're gonna be restricted to use it for water and sewer. So they're gonna get a big pile of money towards that.
A little chunk will also try to tap into the water tap that we're gonna do at Village Hall, which is less than a hundred thousand.
And the sewer tap, right?
Here's, here's what I would recommend, based on the past and how much, whether it's been for town hall or the failures that we have on this kind of WebEx, that we spend X amount of dollars to really have the state of the art to encourage people to show up via WebEx and not have to come in and gather room. Because at the end of the day, COVID's gonna be around for a very long, it's not going away. It's like, it's gonna be like the flu. I can promise you that you're gonna see all these things that they're gonna constantly ask for booster shots and stuff. It's, it's like the cold. It, it is, it's not going away. And if we can encourage people to show up by having a very good system, I'm all for investing the funds or part of the funds to get the state of the art, WebEx communication for this, these purposes, or any meeting purposes for that matter, where it's basically turning, and the rest, give it right back to the community if we can figure out a way to do that.
Okay, so is, I can look into giving it back to the community in some way, shape or form. It's gonna be need-based, I'll go ahead and tell you that. They're gonna have to do like an application process or prove that they have a need. Is there a consensus? Y'all want me to spend time looking into those types of programs?
No.
I, I just, I don't know if we feel like we'll have enough participation.
I don't think we will.
So what, what, what's the, what's the end game here? If you can't use it for anything.
We have to send it back. At a certain point, right?
You, you have to use it by that day.
Yeah.
But who's policing it?
The, the.
Government.
We have to.
Oh, good times.
Yeah, good, good, okay.
Yeah, we'll have to submit on here.
That's right, who's gonna be the adult?
Tell the fox, don't go in the hen.
When the final rule comes out.
Yeah, let's just let Christina get more information.
The expectation is when the final rule comes out, we'll have a little more clarity on exactly what it means. I mean, she had asked a question about sidewalks. They have so far said no. But this is all in the interim rule, so these questions are coming, still coming up. When the final rule comes out, we will hopefully have an approval process through the federal government. So that basically means if there's any ambiguity to the question, can sidewalks be applied or can we use? I mean, heck, I've even asked the idea of using the money to pay for Village Hall, because we have to increase our space and therefore social distancing. It's a good question. Um, it's not very clear as if we can do that or not. But when the final rule comes out, we're hoping to have some level of approval, so we won't get slapped.
Do we know when that's gonna be?
It should be pretty soon.
Can we, can we do, can we go ahead and do, uh, sewer and water infrastructure for the Heritage District with this money? Being that it is that.
Yeah, it's that clear, yes.
That clear. So we could just go ahead and say, let's look into contracting to have this done and do that as part of that.
Yes, and, and Hunter's actually already started preparing to get some quotes for that. So we've already contacted the county and we'll have more information on that. We're, we're trying to do a lot of these things simultaneously, so when we get all the information, we'll be ready to roll.
So, okay, which is great, and I don't hate that idea. But what I would like, in addition to quotes and things like that, is then how are those landowners then going to pay us back for doing that work for their property?
Right, because that, that's benefiting only a few in the community by having that, where they should be on the hook for, if they want that, that's gonna be part of the cost and they're doing that.
Well, I agree, but it also, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna limit it to it's just for 12 people, because those businesses do serve the community, and that's the whole point of the Heritage District.
Yeah, but when we do it anyway, the village isn't gonna pay for it when it's time to do it.
No, I'm just saying that it is just for them.
It's not just for them.
But I agree, they should put in.
But they're, but so figure out, like, figure out some way that they can, maybe not all of it, but.
Right.
A lot of it.
Increase their taxes for.
We're gonna do that anyway, but that's over the life of everything.
And that's, that's gonna pay for, uh, other things like sidewalks, lights, benches, all that stuff, besides the plumbing.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks Christina.
Thank you. I'm not sure what we have to go to Wuma with, but it'd be interesting to see if they even had any discussion.
We got nothing yet.
Yeah, so.
We got half the money. You can tell we got half the money.
You gotta pass it before you see what's inside it. Isn't that a famous quote by someone?
There's so many holes, there's so many holes in that. So many unethical ways of, when the federal government polices something, and let's be, let's just, let's call a spade a spade. If, if you've got the left side policing it, the left communities are gonna be able to just walk all over whatever they wanna determine to be a thing. And if the right's policing it, the, the right's gonna be able to walk all over whatever they wanna interpret and, and do as it does. And it, it's, it's, it shouldn't be free money to begin with.
So.
I don't know what I'm talking about.
Just to be clear, just to be clear, are sidewalks, are sidewalks, because I, I may be able to skin both. Are sidewalks and bike, bike paths considered different or the same?
The same.
They are.
It, I mean, in terms of ARP?
No, the reason I'm asking is because we, we, well, everybody wants to go green, the satisfied left. We add bike paths that, or some sort of path.
Are, are you talking about the funds that we're talking about? Yes, they're the same.
They're the same, okay.
If you're in a, if you're in a red. If you're in a blue, no, you need it, because you need to space the bikes out for COVID.
And wear masks.
And wear masks.
Are there any other kind of blanket ideas that y'all have that you want me to explore? No, just go find out what we can do.
We'll try to bring the report from Wuma.
But you guys, okay, if we had to spend the money, or spend some of it, are you guys, oh, okay with updating our?
You got plenty of time, you got plenty of time. Exhaust every avenue to bend but not break a rule, so we can use it to better our community. That's our, that's our responsibility. But.
That's a, that's a whole beer discussion, cocktail discussion.
I would love, I would love to know, I would love to know how many red counties, red municipalities send it back? And how many blue send it back?
There's only one state that recommended it, that, I think Florida recommended sending monies back or something.
It will be, it will, it will blow your mind.
No, no questions. It's all free. All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, B, Burwick update. I took a picture this morning.
There's still water there.
I need to get a better update from Phillip. Um, we had some correspondence last couple of weeks. And DOT has gotten involved now. I, I don't exactly know why.
Good lord. Why, it's not there, bro.
That's this morning.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I saw yesterday when I was there.
I just, I don't think that they're wanting to, I think they should, I think they know what the answer is, and I don't think they wanna do it.
Oh, that's exactly right.
They're trying to put Band-Aids on a broken arm and go, it'll, it'll, it'll get better.
What I'm telling you, there are companies out there, and I'll give you the name of one, but, but without giving you a name, because I've had it done, where they can actually lift the ground up that allows that to flow up. But that's very expensive. They inject things down there and it, it's a, you know, and it lifts that corner up, or they have to rebuild that whole corner. At the end of the day, it's not our problem, but it is for theirs to fix, and that's not fixed. So.
I'll, I'll get a better update. We actually, just another subcategory in my manager's report. So power bill was submitted, this is why Phillip and I have not followed up on this. Power bill was submitted and DOT did not relinquish Firethorn, Beechwood, Heritage Oak. I think those are the only three.
Why didn't they?
They just didn't. I, I don't know. They were slow. They didn't do it until, um, August 5th. We submitted the paperwork way back last year. For whatever reason, they didn't add it to their agenda until August. So therefore, they did not allow us to submit on our power bill report. So we had to take it off and resubmit power bill report. So that's kind of the hangup as to why Phillip hasn't gotten back with me on the Burwick issues, because we've been busy on.
But why is DOT involved? It's not a DOT road.
Firethorn was.
It's not now.
Well.
Well, it was.
Officially signed it over, is what you're saying. So they, because they didn't do their work, and we're gonna blame it on COVID, I'm sure. But they didn't do their work to basically, because we had our paperwork in way.
We had our resolutions approved.
How long? A year before?
Uh, I think our resolutions were approved last time around this year.
Okay, so we gave them almost a full year, and yet they, somebody didn't put that on the agenda to move those roads over, which I thought would be a high part of it.
Means we're not getting the money for it, but we're taking care of them.
Yeah, and we didn't follow back up with them. We just assumed that they would add it to their agenda, because we gave them the paperwork. So, um, this time next year, when we do another relinquishing of roads, we'll make sure we ask them if they did their job.
So, so whatever monies we spent, then we, we bill.
We haven't spent any money on those roads yet. I mean, we've spent money on the curb and gutter in Firethorn and I think that's all.
But we shouldn't have if we, if they're not approved.
We had already planned on doing that before we had taken over the road. So we are, that's already, that was already planned.
We shouldn't have, Joe, you're right.
Yeah, we shouldn't have, but.
So hold on, so where are we?
DOT is involved. They're supposed to be fixing it. I'm trying to get a timeline from Phillip and, and as to why DOT is involved now.
Will they communicate the fix to you before they do it, or will they just kinda go out there and kinda do it?
They will probably just go out there and kinda do it, but I'll see.
Well, I mean, they said they did it.
I'll, I'll get the engineers involved.
Oh, good. I'm so glad that we're gonna do that, because he was the one that checked, checked it and said everything was fine.
Yeah.
I mean, thank God, let's make sure our engineers are involved.
I will, um.
And you can, you can, you can share it with Mike, because I'm, I'm about.
I'll get them involved and try to get a timeline, so that when it, when it does take place, y'all can monitor it.
Is this, is this something that we can, because I know we have our engineers. Is this, is there, is there a way that we can go ask someone else to independently go take a look at what the problem is? And so when DOT says something and our engineers say something, go, mm, oh, I'm sorry. Because the other engineering firm said that this is the fix.
We, I mean, we have Dewberry, I mean, yeah, we have Dewberry that's doing the Village Hall project. We can ask him to do an independent opinion on it. But yeah, it will cost us.
Well, then we build, we build the engineering firm that keeps telling us the wrong thing and just say, you know, I mean.
Let, let me get another update for you guys at the regular meeting. I wanna find out why DOT is involved.
I just think we're getting, I think we're getting played over something.
We are, we are getting jerked around.
And somehow, in, in the business world, we would go, I can fix that, you guys play with us. And then go to somewhere else and go, all right, I'm calling you out and I'm calling you out.
I've already, I've already said what the fix is. We'll fix it and we'll pay for it and we'll short our engineering firm for it, because they're the ones that signed off on it and said that the roads were just fine.
We were crystal clear of what needed to be done, including the manhole covers and that corner way before they approved it.
I've already given you guys the answer.
I, I, and I, and I, listen, and I agree with you, but then you're, but then you're in the lawsuit.
Ain't the first time.
Yeah, or will be the last, so, you know, at this point, though, it's, it's almost to that point where if we continue to keep sitting on it, it's never gonna get done. So we gotta make some kind of an action forward or something.
Yeah, the, the last couple of meetings, y'all told me to have it done by June 14th, I believe, or go ahead and get it done and just take it off of AMT's bill.
Yeah, it's the 26th of August, Christina.
So let me get an update for you at the regular meeting. At that point, we can.
Did you, did you share with them what, our, what we were talking about, that what we were saying, that we're just gonna get it fixed and have it deducted?
Yep.
And what did they say?
That's when they fixed the manhole covers pretty quickly. And they had started the work on Burwick, but.
Because I think, I think when you go to them, talk to them, since we've done this so many times, I think you're saying, okay, here's where council was at, like, if you guys would all agree with this. And says, we need a fix by this date, otherwise we are taking action ourselves. And if the council agrees, then we will do what we need to do to mitigate that area, and then you will see a deduction on your thing. So have a deadline for them, whatever that is, and say, it, it is what it is, because we're tired of talking about it and wasting time every time we come to a meeting.
Put that, put that, put that in writing, so send them an email saying this needs to be done. So it's take the stand. We got the, we got the communication. And if, and if it's not fixed by then, just that way, call the next one to fix them. And then, yeah, legally.
I'm so tired of talking about this.
I know, there's gotta be a carrot there, if they don't.
We put the deadline in there and, and then it's just like, you know, my children, once I count to three.
Yep.
It is what it is. Because if you, you cry wolf too many times, then they just.
And we're not taking action on it, but what, what I'm saying is, put the deadline in there. If we don't see resolved or mitigated by this date, and you guys pick a date, I don't know what is fair. If it's not fixed by that date, the council will, um, put on the agenda to, to approve XYZ company.
They have a month, they have till our next work session. We've got a month to get it fixed, or we're gonna do it and take it off our bill. I'm so tired of talking about this. They're the, they're the ones, they're the ones that approved it and said everything was just fine. So it's their responsibility.
I'll give them that, and we'll just adhere to it. Uh, if I have to get Jacqueline involved, I will.
Okay. Terricon update.
So Terricon is our third-party tester for the Village Hall site. They've had a lot of issues, as you know, with the subgrade. There's been a lot of things that they've had to go back and, and, um, and do. This is gonna cost an additional, I think he said $4,000 to $6,000 on their contract. So I'm just gonna put it on the consent agenda. We have to do it, quality control. It'll be on your consent agenda next regular meeting. In addition to that, I've been discussing the changes with Dewberry, Dewberry, about the generator change, the, uh, additional, um, well. And we're gonna have to amend, we've had course warrants with Urban and the county. They're gonna have to have a whole revised set of plans. So both parties are gonna have to redo their plans and add and take stuff out. We've gotta add the electrical in, we've gotta put in the removal of the irrigation tap and add, add the electrical, the site plan for the well. And it's gotta have all the specs for the well as well. So that's gonna be an additional $8,000 to $9,000 from Dewberry. So that's going to be an additional eight to $9,000 from Dewberry, um, not really sure what Urban's going to charge, if anything, to just take out the generator. But we may potentially be looking at some overages for that as well.
It is what it is, we've got to do, we've got to.
Are those cones on?
Cones? In the meeting, I asked Derek to pick them up today, I'm tired of looking at them.
Part of that, just to let y'all know, part of that eight or $9,000 is associated with a previously approved amount that I told them to go ahead and go through with based on our DRB ordinance. They, our DRB ordinance at the time of, I don't know, March, April, somewhere in that timeframe, required a illustrative rendering of basically the facade and what it was supposed to look like. That's per the ordinance, that was not something that was in their contract, so I had to get them to do that pretty quickly, and that was around $2,000. So that's part of the eight or $9,000 that we're adding in. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Christina, moving on, the planners' report, Annesburg Trail.
Oh, yeah, probably that was the village hall update, I forgot.
Annesburg Trail easement update. I, I know, I, I have not heard back from, uh, the Tommy, yeah, I sent a text to him and stuff and I don't get it.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll get an email out today, just to see if we can set up that meeting, because I meant to do that last week.
And I'll, again, remind them to say, hey, all we want to do is get together and just kind of check off what, what they, they would like to see happen, if anything, so. But, uh, and just keep me updated on that, okay? Next up, is Belgrove update?
Yep, so I just, I wanted to get some clarification on this one, um, I was able to talk to the developer, um, not sure if there was discussion prior to my arrival here about the fee and lieu for the, um, trail, if that was an option that was directed for, for either myself or Ray to proceed with. I don't know if that was discussed with him and the developer, because the developer's saying it wasn't, but I also don't know if that was just like him telling me that. So, you know, I guess I'm looking for is that, to start back, I have established that communication, I can go that route and after that, then I know that the final thing was, we just don't want to lose the easement. Um, for my understanding, as long as the easement, you know, remains in place and we, and we're able to.
Didn't we decide to just do fee and lieu for, for right now, because of the terrain and all that?
Park, Track and Greenway does not want to lose an easement.
No, we don't want to lose the easement, but as far as the construction of the trail, I thought we just wanted to do fee and lieu for that and ease it, right?
Yes.
That was the direction that I thought we went.
Well, I will try with that, and if I can't, like I said, for some reason, if they have discrimination, we'll be, I guess we'll have that discretion later, but I'm going to at least make sure that the easement remains.
Yes.
A part of the, the.
Because they can still walk down the sidewalk and out the back.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, because it's just the terrain, it's, it's terrible over there, but I.
But they just don't want to lose that.
I agree, I wouldn't want to lose the easement, but I don't, but I would want to retain the fee and lieu to be able to put it into some other project that is more.
You are correct, Andy, yes.
Just wanted to get clarification, but I will make sure that, uh, I will follow up with that, have that, and like I said, either for the council meeting or the next work session.
And on the subject of Belgrove, um, I happen, have you heard from the neighbor to the, that would be east, which is Charlottemont? She's concerned with the development of what they're doing is her, she's concerned, I ran into her just by accident at a dinner. And that her garage is, she's concerned she may lose part of her garage, the foundation of it, or something like that. She, she mentioned something and I said, you know, call, call the village and, and say, have you been in contact with her?
Not, yeah, not sure about that one, um, I know there was concerns about current, uh, current property owners out there about, um, the new developers, because it was Shea Homes and then Empire Bottoms. So it's been, you know, this is, I think, the third developer in four or five years, so a lot of different issues out there. But, uh, you know, one of the concerns from some of the property owners out there were that the grading and tree removal plan was not followed. Mike did do a visit, I reviewed the plans, everything I, I can see in the plans, as well as Mike's, um, engineering, or the, the letter from that, and everything was done to, that, that plan that was approved back. It was in, they originally submitted in November last year, it was then revised and fully approved in December of last year. Basically, that was because since the developer changed, they had to resubmit plans for the additional lots, as in the tree grading, or tree removal and grading. With that being said, I know where her, Ms. Mont's places, her garage is at, it was kind of slowly fully treated, a lot of the trees were removed based, based off the plan that was approved, not sure if that then was, has created now additional problem, no, that, I'm not, I, I haven't talked to her, but yeah.
You may be getting a call from her, because she was asking me and I was not that involved when.
And then, um.
Understanding what was going on.
I got kind of one other thing, as I was able to speak with Union Power about the roundabout lighting this week.
Still on that.
We are moving forward, we, we are.
We're going to rename it Berwick.
But, um, basically, DOT had, is, uh, requiring us to, is going to require to have four additional light poles put in. However, it's not necessarily going to be an additional cost for the village, it depends on the type, because if it's just the, the wood poles, they're free. Um, if it's in like the breakaway or the clear zone breakaway, for safety purposes that DOT requires, we would have to, it would be a breakaway type pole, which would be an additional cost. Um, I'm getting clarification on how many of the four additional poles will need to potentially be breakaway, if any. And then I will be coming back with you guys, and then we can kind of, you know, if that's something.
Why would we need breakaway poles, do we not have places to put these with long enough arms that they're not in?
Is there requirement?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's DOT's requirement, basically, and with the, the four that are going, um, the four that, the four additional ones are being proposed is, it's, one's on our property, one would be on Fenter, the other one would be on our property, and then potentially in the right of way slash, um, right beside, uh, Providence Downs House, um, vegetated buffer.
Now everyone's thinking we're going to get that.
No, 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 you know, you know what that, you know where that is, that, that light?
Seadriv.
No.
Catch can.
Nope.
Oh, Miami.
West Palm Beach, West Palm Beach, it has that in there. But those are nice, I thought those were nice lights, if you could do something like that in the right of way.
Not in the roundabout, that's going to be up and down the Hearsy Sisters, okay, but that's not what we're talking about.
If they're on our property, we could, they could be outside of the right of way and be on our property. Seadriv was pottery, because the pottery is where I'm from.
It's where, like I said, I've, I've got kind of the submitted plan, and that's, we just have to, we're getting clarification on where the clear zone, what DOT is, and like I said, potentially, it's not, it's none of them. We can, we can make it work where we're not going to have that happening.
How many were there to begin with, that they're adding four more, I mean, how many?
I think there were nine.
It was, yeah, eight or nine.
They're going to be lit up like a Christmas tree, those roundabouts, you're going to come in and be like, my son's laughing.
Only some blackout curtains.
I.
Do you not want a much more light pollution out here?
No, if you look at the footcandle lighting, it's, it's not going to be anything major. Basically, why we have to add those poles, um, is one's in between the two roundabouts, because if you look at what was being proposed, it's, then it's going to go from like light to dark, it's going to be weird, and.
Oh, in the, in the strip between, that's where you're adding the poles.
They're adding one, at least one there, potentially two, the DOT was that, they're not going to approve it because they don't want it to go from light to dark and so on. Um, and then the other two were just to get the adequate lighting mainly based off of where the lights, light poles are structured. It's to get the, there was like one dead spot in the, in the, uh, second roundabout, and that's kind of why we had to add another pole there, so.
Well, I understand why they would add it in the stretch between, for sure, okay.
Yeah, two, like I said, two were mainly for the dead spots, and the other two that have to be proposed, may, I don't know if that was something that was already part of the original plan or something, but.
So that's the photometric plan that DOT sent back, or is that ours?
This is, this is the one that I think was submitted.
Okay, so you're going to get the information back from Matt as far as the cost?
Yes.
We've already budgeted what we thought it was going to be.
Like I said, Matt, yeah, he, he told me that they, he was supposed to be out there this week to stake off where the additional ones are going. We already know, like I said, one's going to be on the Fenter property, one or two on ours, and the other one is just potentially going to be in the, um, we might have to get a, uh, encroachment agreement with Providence Downs House, but it could also be in their right, or in the right of way, and that might be where the, the breakaway is at.
So, what's the specs that remain with DOT?
Once we get, uh, basically, we will update the plan, from what I've been told, is we'll update the plan. Um, the lights themselves will be 13.55 each to, per month, like to, for the power ran, ran to them.
$13.
$13.55 per each for, I think we looked 10.
Could have been 1,300, so, you never know.
Now we're having to have 50 bucks a month to, to run all of them.
But, um.
So the plan has to be resubmitted, they review it, they'll review it.
Yeah, pretty much, just once it should get resubmitted, it should be, uh, quick, and as well as the only thing for it to be resubmitted, if there's breakaways, if we have to have any of those breakaway poles, I'll either have to make it depend on the cost of it, it might have to be brought to you guys for approval with the pending, I don't, I don't know the cost, and we don't know how many yet.
So, the one question I would have is those, just one, let's see where it goes, but initially, that roundabout, those roundabouts, we're just talking about the one roundabout right now, right? Or about both?
Talking about that.
Okay, so both roundabouts were designed to fail within 10 to 15 years, meaning that there's going to be so much traffic that they're going to expand it. When they do the lights, are they going to be putting them on the outside of the extended area, or are they just going to put them where they think they belong now, only to be in 15 years moved back again? Do you know the answer to that?
Well, they're going to have to move them.
I don't know the full answer, but my guess is, is the right of way has already been procured, or the right of way that's there is already for what, the potential 10 to 15 year down, but like, they wouldn't have to maybe, so.
They, yeah, they acquired.
So if they don't have to then put these lights in the right of way, then they potentially will not have to be moved.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering if they're going to do it, and then when it does fail, then they're saying, okay, we got to move the lights back out.
The only, it, it might only impact potentially two.
Typically, when that happens, they pay for the money.
Yeah, but they, they would, they would pay for it.
Okay.
No, that could change, it could be.
But those lights, the lights, they could have worked in there, did we get to choose anything that's for?
No, it's the.
That goes back to us on that.
Thank you, Hunter, anything else?
All right, thank you. Next up, we have, uh, Agenda, a review of action items.
Did you want me to do Vilatoll real quick?
I thought you did it.
I didn't do it, no.
Did I not say, Christina, did you do Vilatoll and you said yes?
She did Terricon, which is tied along with the show.
Okay, let's go, let's back up, because we did table on two, until you got here, so.
So, in this real quick, um, the slab is supposed to be poured tomorrow, I think you had mentioned that earlier. The lumber was supposed to be delivered this week, the framer will actually start next week, so as of Monday, Tuesday, y'all should start seeing some vertical construction going up, and it'll go pretty quick after that, so.
So they say.
That's all of it?
When's their finish date?
Eight months.
Eight months, but I will say, um, Councilman Wortman and I had a meeting on the site, what, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
And they had just kind of passively mentioned a four-month timeframe, so.
I'll take that over.
I mean, you, you know, in two weeks, there's, there's going to be a building there, when, when they start framing, it goes quick, you know, they'll get it dry and all, then the rest of the time.
It's got to go quick, so people know still the wood.
Well, but it's, it's the, it's, it's all the materials, that's what takes.
We live in a hard, but it's a tough labor.
Well, the lumber prices have come down dramatically, so it's not so much of a concern, yes, Bob?
Just a question, uh, with your profession, as well as what's going on in the world today with building materials and costs, um, with this thing going up with the time that it is, do you think we're going to be surprised by, um, costs, costs that are going to be rising as opposed to what we are attracted for or like?
No, because the, the costs are actually coming down at this point, and the lumber package is purchased back during the peak of the lumber prices.
Yeah.
Um, it was told to me that it was some $40,000 for the framing materials. Now, whether or not, I mean, they, you know, they may have backed that off because of timing, because we still didn't have a permit at that time, and we may be, but, either way, if there's a savings on lumber costs, the Randolph is going to get that, not us. Uh, so I, I don't see any, uh, potential for any extra cost on our part, um, on anything at this point, because they were figured, when that bid came in and everything was high.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good, anything else, Christina?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, so moving on to, uh, Agenda Items, Review of Action Items.
Okay, I don't have much, Derek's going to get quotes for preserving the Heritage Oaks at the park. Christina is going to give an update on Berwick at the September regular meeting, and will inform AMT, they have a month deadline, um. I really don't have much else.
You're going to send out a reminder for the schools?
That, I just, I just had it in my communications list, so, I got it on there.
All right, any other comments on that? Moving on, a review of ongoing action item list.
All right.
It's a separate item now.
I appreciate that.
It's Kimmy's world. I know, she gets so excited about this.
All right. Let's, let's remove the village center renderings, because, because we're not going to do that, we're going to let each individual, any owner, do their own jam.
Okay.
Just remove that. That's all I got.
Oh, what?
What? Are you sick?
That's one.
Anybody else? Now we're holding. Okay, um, moving on, then we have council comments. Bob, I always go to you because you're web access.
Yeah.
You're saying the right words somehow.
It's a progress, Jamie. For me? You sure?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Oh my, I'd have to say something, thank you, Stan. Thank you for.
You don't have to.
Yes, I do, um, thank you for making this meeting, um, go as effi- efficiently as possible, and, uh, with that, I will.
Nope, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Ooh.
To add economic development to the closed session.
I can read that specific language if you'd like.
Wasn't that specific enough? She's got it on the, you mean, the, as far as movement?
As far as the actual motion, the way we actually change it to on the agenda.
Oh, I can do that.
Close session.
Yeah, I know, but I got to suspend the rules to.
To add something to it, okay, so if you go ahead and add it efficiently.
So, um, I'll, I'll change the language, so the full motion to go into closed session will be recess into closed session.
I got it.
I've heard it now.
I have it written down.
Go ahead and read it then, for the record.
Okay, so, I know, but, oh, okay, to recess into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143318 dot 11A and 4, to review and approve closed session minutes for 7/13/21 and 8/10/21 council meetings and economic development.
They get it all?
To discuss matters relating to.
She said economic development.
I like to read long forms, but okay.
Economic development is just fine, okay.
Further discussion, halls in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, so who's in that meeting with the?
But now we need to go into closed session, that was just added.
That was adding to the agenda.
So now we need a motion to move into closed session.
So I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143318 dot 11A and 4 for review and approval of closed session minutes from 7/13/21 and 8/10/21 council meetings and economic development.
Further discussion, speed reader, halls in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, we're in closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to move into open session.
Further discussion, halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at?
11:03.
11:03 AM.
I'm not ready yet.
Halls in favor?
Aye.